And call this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order Monday, March 12, 2018, at 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. The agenda is approved as presented. Invocation, Councilmember Douglas.
Would you please join me to provide a moment of solace for Mr. Willie Charles, who recently passed away. Mr. Charles was an employee with Public Works for the past eight years. Dear Lord, please comfort Willie's family and friends during the difficult times. May they feel your presence as they move in mourn their loss. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. We're now down to the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes from our regular meeting, February 26, 2018. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Those minutes are approved. We have no public presentations tonight, so we are down to the first public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
We have two speakers tonight. First, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Ordinance 691.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I'm all for having processes and procedures in place. That's how you get efficiency and accountability. And I think Ordinance 691 certainly fits that mold. I would like to know, just out of curiosity, is there any specific collaborative capital project works in mind with this? Or is this just a general statement to set a process going forward for whatever comes up? Also, did we have an old process? And how does this differ from the old process? And then, secondly, like with all processes, we'd like to know, what is the goal of the process besides just getting a process? Is it to ensure accountability? Is it to lower costs, increase efficiency? There's a myriad of goals it could have, but it would help us to understand with any of these procedures and process that you put in place, but today we're speaking to Ordinance 691, what is your goal and what is your purpose and why are you doing it? Those are just normal questions with anything, and perhaps you can touch on those at council time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on EMS, fire events, et cetera.
Good evening, Council. Jeff Schaefer, District Four. And really, what I said was, I'm just glad I beat Randy to the podium. Most of us have better things to do on a Monday night, but sometimes the entertainment of listening to department heads that come and speak of their success is worth the drive of 20 miles to me, just to hear their take on the situation. I know that all of you are aware that we can do a lot better than we are right now. And honestly, that's all I'm asking for, is for everyone to do better. Do the best you can, but do better. But briefly, the following departments need to be reviewed in the public often, without criticizing them, which I'm known to do often. Those that need to be reprimanded, and fired, and tarred, and feathered, and hanged, don't lose your sense of humor, folks. I'm only kidding. There are people in the departments that need to be reviewed, and when they come up here and we hear them talking about what their success is, honestly, I'm just trying to contain myself not to walk out here and bust out laughing. And then you have some people who are great. Let me say that, too. We have the airport people, I was very impressed. We've done some things that are really good. I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay. This is not a tear jerker, but the fire department, is he here tonight, by the way? Fire department people? Too bad. When I say that, I mean a fire department that is willing, able, and ready to put the fire out when called upon, not to show up fully geared and watch what's left of the property go up in smoke. Then we have the EMS department, Emergency Medical Services, or better known in my neighborhood as Excuses Made for Service. Yes, we have trained, excellent people. They are. But they cannot arrive on time, so what good is all that? But if they could, they could save your life, and they would. Police, the same thing. As a matter of fact, they can't even arrive on time to save each other, because there are not enough of them. Now we come to the hospital. I've mentioned this before, and I hope that bring this to your attention will stop the sheer waste and starts of forward thinking towards a productive solution. You're flushing millions down the drain after a hospital that should have been shut down years ago. Take the money that the hospital's asking for and put it to good use. $4 million gives you a lot of latitude to do things like hire more police, so they can have coverage all over the county. Move the EMS stations or ambulances so they can arrive at the majority of people in less than 10 minutes. Pay for and hire professional firemen. I know you've done some of that, but we need more. And offer the volunteers more money, or expense money, when they show up and offer them, so they can buy more than gas and a cup of coffee. Ask the hospital executives, staff, if they're willing to put any skin in the game, instead of asking the citizens to take our tax money. How about the executive staff, from the CEO on down the food chain, take a 50% cut in their salary? There's more here, and I don't want to take up a lot of time, but bingo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes Segment One.
All right. We skip over public hearings, since there are none of those. Ordinance's resolutions and orders, second reading of Ordinance Number 691. It's an ordinance by Fairfield County establishing procedures to expend funds appropriated by Fairfield County in its annual fiscal budget for collaborative capital public works projects. Do we have a motion?
No move.
It's been motion improperly seconded to provide second reading to Ordinance Number 691. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Goins.
Okay, if we could just get kind of a briefing from Administrator on that.
That's fine.
Yes, I'd be glad to. In last year's budget, we included roughly $300,000 in that budget to assist the municipalities in the county with projects. This is to encourage collaboration between the county and the towns in doing things that would benefit our joint citizens, and it's also to encourage them at times to apply for grants, is to help leverage them with projects, or leverage money that they can get through grants to, again, complete projects. The ordinance that we're passing is helping, is codifying how we're going to give that money to them or work collaboratively with them. We do have to, this is public money, we do have to account for it, it's got to be done as far as the procurement of any services in the proper way, so this just outlines how that money will be spent, accounted for, and how those projects would be selected and move forward.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll just add to that and say that, just to remind everybody why we did that $300,000 allocation in the current fiscal year's budget, is that, you know, throughout the year, we have requests come in from municipalities. Sometimes those are good requests, but if we haven't budgeted money for them, we can't in the middle of a budget year then go and provide that funding. So that was why we put the funding in place to begin with, and then this, as Mr. Taylor said, not only is to put criteria around how that money will be funded, but also to express to those third-party governments, municipalities, what kind of projects the county is interested in. So it gives some information on that, and just some accountability as well, with a 15% at a minimum from the local entity asking for the funding, 15% funding from them, so they have some skin in the game, that sort of thing. But if there are any specific questions, I'd be glad to try and address them, as the Admin and Finance Committee did work on this and recommended approval based on what's in front of us today. Any other discussion?
And I thank you so much for that and for setting it up in that manner, because we definitely have to have transparency and accountability, and that brings us to that table, so that's a good thing.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Six and one. Second reading is provided to Ordinance Number 691. We're going to skip over third and final reading on Ordinance 694 tonight. Administration has asked that we hold this until a future date. We're now down to Board and Commission minutes. We'll do all three of these at once, unless anybody has any questions or comments on specific minutes that have been presented to us, but we've got Disabilities and Special Needs, the Hospital Board, and Chamber of Commerce tonight.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve those minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Those minutes are approved. No Board and Commission appointments for tonight, no old business, no new business. Mr. Taylor, we're down to County Administrator's report.
Yes, sir, thank you. Tonight, the department head that we have giving a presentation is Ms. Miriam Woodard. She's our tax collector. Ms. Woodard?
As you know, we are located, the Tax Collector's Office is located at the courthouse in Uptown Windsboro. You can reach us by calling us locally at 803-815-4021, or 4022, if you have any questions. The Tax Collector's Office is a separate office under the supervision of the County Administrator. And most of our, excuse me, I'm kind of nervous. Thank you. The majority of the Tax Collector's Office duties are governed by state law and procedures, so we follow all state laws concerning the Tax Collector's Office, and we try to follow all the procedures for that office. The Tax Collector collects delinquent taxes, receives delinquent notices, we do the mailing for all delinquent taxes once we receive them from the Treasurer's Office. Excuse me. We submit information to the South Carolina Debt Set Off Office for the collection of mobile home taxes, and we account for all monies collected by the office, and we turn it, every, all money collected, over to the County Treasurer. We prepare delinquent tax sales. So if there are delinquent taxes that are involved, when someone doesn't pay their taxes by a certain date, which would normally go by state law, you have until August 31st to come in and pay your delinquent taxes before we start preparation for delinquent tax sale. Once the tax sale is commenced, we are charged with, if the certified notice, we send out certified notice on all delinquent taxes, taxes that are not paid by one month after receipt from the Treasurer's Office. If those taxes are not paid by August 31st, then we prepare our notices to go out to post those properties. And anytime during that period of time when they are being prepared, the individual still has the opportunity to come in and pay taxes, those taxes up, before we go out and post the property for the delinquency. Once it's posted, they have to a certain date, because we have to advertise that property for three consecutive weeks before anything can be done as far as selling the property. We normally have our tax sales by, because of the way that we have to go about posting in the time period to post it, they are normally held the first Monday in December. If they're not paid by that Friday preceding that first Monday, then it goes to sale. After, when it goes to sale, any individual who has come in and offered to be a bidder at the tax sale can come to that sale on Monday af, well, the Monday of the sale. We are required to sell the property that's advertised unless there's a problem with it anytime period between that, maybe the Assessor's Office finds a problem with the property, or finds a problem with the taxes that were applied to that property. If not, then we take it to sale. It's sold to the highest bidder for cash, cashier's check, or money order. And then after the sale, that individual or that delinquent taxpayer has one year to come back in and redeem that property from tax sale. Now, we have, the majority of the property that's advertised and sold is redeemed, and that's a good thing for us, because we normally, out of the percentage of properties that are sold here in Fairfield County, it's probably less than 3% that actually is deed it over. Now lately, I mean, when I say lately, it's probably in the last three to four years, we've been seeing, you know, it kind of creeping up a little bit as far as individuals coming in and redeeming their property. I think out of the 300 and something that we sold the previous year, well, yeah, previous year, which was February 6th of 2017, it may be 13 or 14 that's actually going through, which is, which is good, but still bad in the sense that those individuals are losing their properties to bidders. We do have some that are going through to Forfeited Land Commission, which, once deed it over and recorded, all those Forfeited Land Commission properties, I'm hoping to have that finished up and recorded probably by the summer, so that what we are doing now is just taking the names and information from any person that's interested, so that once the county looks, looks over what's going to be going into forfeited land, to see if it's there any property that is useful to the county, then we will send out information to the individuals. And hopefully, everything that goes through the, through to forfeited land will go to someone that's interested in it, so that we can get it back in, on the tax roll. That's about it. We, what, what we have, the Tax Collector's Office has a current, for the current fiscal year, we've collected over 800 or $933,000, that's through the end of February for the current fiscal year. We, we have approximately 1.6 million that's including bankruptcies and maybe businesses that have, are no longer in, in business, that the County Treasurer is help, helping me to try to find out these individuals and where they are, and try to get these off the tax rolls. And our, our office is due to receive the 2017 taxes as of March 19th, which is Monday coming. And the Treasurer is, it will be approximately 2.3 million that will be turned over to me on that date. Yeah, so if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Woodard. Any questions for Councilmembers?
Ms. Woodard, if, if someone buys 23 acres at a tax sale, and it's not redeemed in the year's time, how, what, how many acres does this person get that buys the acreage?
Normally, we'll tell them ahead of time, at the tax sale, the Forfeited Land Commission has the right to divide off a certain portion, and...
Whose decision is this?
This is the Forfeited Land Commission. That's, right now, it stands as the Treasurer, the Auditor, and the Clerk of Court is the Forfeited Land Commission. They, in turn, ask the Assessor, since he is the one that's over the land, to divide off whatever portion that will be covered under those taxes.
Is subdivided.
Yeah. At that, at...
All right, now, if...
It has in the past, but I am being asked in the future to allow the total portion to go through.
Right. Now, this land is subdivided, you know, on, say, the whole way, and it hadn't been redeemed yet, and they do get a portion of this property.
Mm-hmm.
Is a survey done in order to be able to get a deed to be recorded?
We don't do the survey. What the Assessor does is go in and divide off which portion is to be turned over to the...
And the person that paid the taxes will have to get a survey.
Yeah.
Right.
To go, to go with that piece that the Assessor has divided, to show that they're getting. I think we have one, maybe two pieces, that are due to be divided.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments, Ms. Woodard? Mr. Pauli?
Thank you for being here, and thank you for what you do for the county.
Thank you.
I, too, would like to say thank you so much. I wish there were more people here. We had some way of getting this information out, because a lot of people really don't know how their property run and, and what happens, because we hear people say, well, the county takes their property. They don't really take it. They have opportunity to redeem it back, you know, but a lot of people don't know that.
Yeah, they have here. My door is always open, and I'm just a phone call away for anybody that wants to, wants any information concerning the office.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you again.
Next, we have a report from our new Fire Services Director, Jason Pope, and Phyllis Watkins, our Emergency Manager Director, Management Director, concerning the fires that we had over in the Jenkinsville area down near the Richland border. I'll let Jason give you all update on that, and while he's coming, I want to thank the Forestry Service for all the work they did. This could have been a much worse situation, but I think everybody came together, Richland, Newbury, Fairfield County, and the Forestry Service, to prevent that from being much worse. Jason?
Yes, thank you all for letting me be here tonight. Thank you for the invitation. Approximately 2:15 on the afternoon of Saturday, March 3rd, county fire units were dispatched to the reports of multiple brush fires on 215 South and 213 in the Jenkinsville area. Upon arrival, the, the first arriving units noticed really quickly that they had a very quickly expanding incident. It was getting real bad, real quick, and so they immediately asked for support from the Fire, from the Forestry Commission, and they were coming in route. The duration of the incident was about four hours. We were out there for about four hours that afternoon, and in that time period, we had 30 personnel on scene, support from the County Sheriff's Office, County EMS Rescue Squad, and even Newbury County Fire, so your friends to the west came over to help, too. We really appreciated that. The equipment, county equipment that was on scene, we had six brush trucks, we had four tankers, we had two engines, we had three forestry dozers, we had one airplane. We had, the forestry airplane was in the sky, so y'all, if you see Sam Anderson from up in Chester, he was our eyes in the sky, and that was invaluable. We had the County Rehab Unit, we also had one EMS unit. Also, since a lot of our resources from the county were on the western part of the county all in one area, Station 7, which is Ridgway, came into town and provided standby coverage at Station 20. They actually responded to a call while they were, it was a report of a wooden brush fire in the Greenberry area. Turns out, it was a, I think it was a controlled burn, but they were here if we needed them, and we were thankful for that. Great Falls was actually on standby for the Mitford area, because the Mitfords' truck was, was over here, because we put out an all-call. Sammy Castles was one of the first chief officers on scene, and he knew right quick we needed a lot of help, and so we even had friends from Mitford come down to help. In total, we had 20 different fires reported, and they consumed approximately 100 acres, okay? The Forestry Commission plowed 11 of those fires, their dozers plowed 11 fires, and they totaled 85 acres, so we had more fires than they actually plowed. Thankfully, no one was injured, no structures were damaged, no, no homes were damaged, and it's because of the quick action of our volunteer firefighters. They did some amazing work, I just want to tell you. The Forestry Commission was back out on scene the next Sunday. They worked most of the day Sunday to completely contain the fires. The media was out there, they were on top of it, we were thankful for the coverage from WIS and WLTX. As you know, we put out publicly that initially we thought these fires were set intentionally. That had everybody kind of on guard, okay? Everybody was really worried. Turns out, if you've seen the press release, that a joint investigation was conducted by our Sheriff's Office, thank you to Sheriff Montgomery and his staff, and as well as the Forestry Commission, law enforcement, and they determined it was accidental. The one lead they had that really made them think it was intentional turned out to be somebody trying to put them out. So that's good. That makes everybody feel, feel really good. One comment I will say is, I can't say enough about how well your public safety agencies work together. We had everybody out there from the sheriff to, from the sheriff's office, and to EMS, and, and the whole scene of rescue, and the cooperation and the support was absolutely amazing. I just want to tell you, you've got some great public safety officials in this county. You've got a lot to be thankful for. I also got to thank the ones, too, that often get neglected, and that is our 911 dispatchers. They, there were two people on shift, I think Ms. Phyllis came in to help them. The radio traffic was crazy, okay? Because of this, the incident was expanding so rapidly, and there we get multiple calls, and they did an amazing job. They handled the radio traffic, they, they got us the resources we needed when we called upon them, and they just did an amazing job. Also, I appreciated the support from our administration. Mr. Smith came out, Ms. Goins came out, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Anderson. I thank you all so much. Everybody noticed when you came out, it made a big difference, and I appreciate it, so thank you very much for that. I'll say one last thing, and then I'll let Ms. Phyllis talk. Had this incident happened during the week, it's very possible that we would have had a different outcome. This was 2:00 PM on Saturday afternoon. If this had happened 2:00 PM on Thursday afternoon, half of those volunteer firefighters would not have been available. So the fact that they wouldn't have been there, our efforts to actually fight the fires and contain them, our efforts would have been severely hampered. So we have, the Fairfield County Fire Service has 120 volunteer firefighters, they're all amazing. We need twice that many. So when you see ones, when you're out in your community and you see them, tell them thank you, because I appreciate them, and I know we all do. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I think Ms. Phyllis is up. Anybody got any questions for me? I'll turn it over to Ms. Phyllis.
Any questions from Councilmembers? Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Jason has talked about the dispatchers, and he was right about there were only two dispatchers on duty. And the thing is, what they did, I, I went back and pulled reports for an hour and 20 minutes into the incident, and though it was a four-hour incident, the most crucial, crucial time for them was the first hour. And in the midst of that hour and 20 minutes, those two dispatcher field over 100 calls. We only averaged 100 calls, a little over 100 calls in a day. And on top of that, within those 100 calls, they monitored 592 radio transmissions within an hour. This was taxing for them, but when I got there, they told me they had it, and they really pulled through for Fairfield County, because it was, as he said, it was chaotic on the radio, and for that purpose, we did bring a three-minute excerpt from that incident, and Mr. Davis is going to play it for you. So, because normally, when you hear things on the news, they only pull one conversation, and that's all you hear, but this is how it sounds behind the scenes.
Sanford County, 911. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, I just called, y'all, not too long ago, by these fires.
10:51, 120.
I'm over, I'm over.
Here on 213, 9, towards the bridge.
I'm turning the fire, it's going the wrong way, because I'm coming north on 215.
He told me go ahead and go on down the bridge.
In this area, they're on the way.
Okay, yeah, you got about 25 of them, 215.
I'm going 215 south.
Fairfield County, 111, responding, Highway 213, we'll be heading out, 213.
Complaints, I'm coming in on 121.
Oh, I don't know, I just caught that, I just caught that, bro.
Okay, we have them on the way, thank you.
Chris, I'm a little bit ahead of you, so I'll mention something, just a second. Got it, sir?
It's 911, and, and line...
1311, 311.
121, 120, be advised, college, city...
I heard something on the east road.
20, 20 wooden brush on the side of the road, 215 south, 215 south.
Okay. 121, the county line, 83. Thank you.
Hello.
61, old scene, center, got one of them, what up?
24, copy, 61, old scene, has one to the hour, we have reports of probably 20, 21 fires up and down, 213, 215. Also have reported one on Mickey Road, Mickey Road off of Fish Hook. In the area, Mickey Road, Fish Hook Road, here, north, 215.
This is what it sounds like to us in 911. It's not a quiet... This is what it sounds like to us in 911. It's not a quiet scene. It's not one radio transmission after other. It's just all on top of that and as a matter of fact, taking in the telephone calls as well. So this is a live demonstration of what we do in 911. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for either Mr. Pope or Ms. Watkins?
Thank you all for what you do. We really appreciate you.
I'll just, I'll just say, um, thank you very much to, um, both of you as well as staff and the volunteers as well. Um, you know, we all know how important it is, but, but I was glad I was able to come out and, um, be able to witness a little bit of that. Shows how important every component of, um, you know, the, the team working together is and, and, uh, I, I obviously didn't see the E911 center, but I did hear some of that chatter as well as I rode out with a staff member and heard over the radio. So I know that's a tough job and a lot of chatter going on as well. Appreciate everybody for what they did there and do on a daily basis. No, I didn't. I didn't. I knew it was well taken care of. All right?
Next, we have a donation and the request to accept 2.72 acres from the Lake Watery Presbyterian Church on Old Windmill Road, Old Windmill Road in Ridgway, um, being given by them to the county for the use as a fire station that we had budgeted to build on that particular piece of property. We have done the geotechnical work. It does perk, so we're good in that respect. We've done title search. It's got a clean title and we do need just council to vote to allow us to accept it and close on the, on the deed.
Do we have a motion that affect?
Make a motion that affect.
Second?
It's been moved and properly seconded that the county do accept the 2.72 acres from Lake Watery Presbyterian Church to use the purpose of a fire station. Any discussion? Mr. Pauli?
Did we do any checking to see if it would affect like the rating of the, um, ISO rating?
Is Jason still here? I'll let him address that, but we have discussed that because again, it could dilute our, um, uh, staff, our, our volunteers and could have a negative effect. And we again, always need volunteers and that's something, Jason, if you would address.
Yes, actually it's, it's convenient that you, see, it's like I knew you were going to ask that. Um, I actually went to the courthouse today to sit, sit down with our GIS personnel, can't remember his name, sorry, I just met him today. And we looked at that, Jeff, thank you, we looked at that location. The south, currently the southeastern fire station covers up to a certain point, but there's, forgive me for not knowing these Lake Watery areas yet, okay? I hadn't got over there enough yet. But there are several heavily densely populated peninsulas there that this new fire station will cover within the five-mile radius. So that's really good for, for those homeowners because whatever that ISO rating that that substation gets will extend to those homes. And it basically covers, there's two points, forgive me, I just saw it for the first time today, and they are within five road miles of this new location.
Tony, uh,
Tony?
Yeah, Tony Hill, um, uh, did a study on it and said it would cover 258 homes.
That actually, we looked.
Goes all the way down to Rolling Hills.
That's correct. That is what Jeff was showing me today. I'm glad I went by and saw him do that. We had, we had a number of about three hundred different pieces of property. So we were kind of doing rough numbers.
Let me, let me ask one question, just to build on the, the question that Councilmember Pauli asked. One of the concerns that we had in discussing this early on, and I will say that what we're talking about tonight is the acceptance of the property, not building the fire station yet. That'll be a separate issue for us to handle. Um, but one issue or concern that came up was, while this may be a good thing for folks in the, in the five-mile vicinity, uh, vicinity of the new station once it's built, will that dilute the volunteers from the Dutchman Creek, um, station, for example, and, and negatively affect that area?
Well, I've heard that concern too from, uh, from some of our, right now, and I, and I, you know, I'm kind of new to this project, so I don't have a lot of the background, so forgive me for that. Um, we're treating right now, we're looking at this right now as just being a substation of southeastern. That may change. Um, if it's a, if it's created as a substation of southeastern, that means the same volunteers because it's only three or four road miles, I think. I know we have some southeastern folks here. Uh, I think that's, it's not that far from the current southeastern fire station. So right now, we're just, this is planning, okay? This is not done, but we're saying, hey, we could treat it as such. That way you're kind of relying on the same group of volunteers to also respond that equipment to. So.
Okay, that sounds like a, maybe a good creative way to do it so you don't run into that issue, but again, this is separate from actually building the station. So the more of that you can find out, that, that helps us when we get around to that. That's fantastic.
We'll, we'll be continuing to work on that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this? All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero will accept that 2.72 acres. Mr. Taylor?
Last item I have is just a notice on the intergovernmental meeting that's going to be hosted by the town of Ridgway. That'll be coming up Thursday, March 15th at 6 o'clock, and Ridgway will be hosting it at their town hall, just as a reminder to everyone.
Thank you very much. Uh, no clerk to council's report tonight. We're now down to the second public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
Three speakers tonight. First, Mr. Randy Bright speaking on request.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgway. Probably none of you have figured out my motivations for keep coming to the meetings. Uh, you never will. But I will give you a secret. One of the reasons I, I enjoy coming, quite frankly, is speakers like we just had from departments. It really keeps us informed and lets us know what's going on, gives us the big picture and, and some are better at it than others, but all of them, I get some takeaways with. So thank you. Please continue to do that. In that same vein, there, I have a couple of requests. Um, the first request is to get somebody up here from the COG, Central Midlands COG. And I don't know if anybody else realizes this, they've got on their webpage about twenty plans that they have written and developed for all of their counties that they serve. And it amounts to probably, I don't know, I started counting for a while, but it's probably a thousand pages of plans for us. I haven't heard, and there's like twenty different ones. And I haven't heard of one of them yet. I haven't heard one presentation yet. I'm seeing them communicate, you know, maybe I, you know, I missed a meeting or two last year, so maybe I missed the meeting they showed up. But I think it's, uh, would serve us well to know what the, the COG has planned for us. You know, I'm not saying that they're not a good organization, but to be honest with you, they don't know what good they're doing us, but I'd like to hear what good they're doing us. So I request that you, uh, get them to speak, uh, here and let us know. Maybe one out of twenty plans would, would be sufficient as a start. All right, secondly, um, one of the issues that we face and have faced for a long time in our county, as many rural counties do, is low-income housing. And I would ask that administration or somebody start in, uh, investigating. There's a lot on the internet about, um, concrete block housing. Very cheap, low income, maybe eight hundred to a thousand square foot homes. And now being done via the latest in technology, 3D printers. And we're talking costs under $50,000 for an eight hundred square foot home. And if you've ever lived in Florida, uh, if I ever, as long as I have a choice, I would prefer block homes reinforced by, uh, steel rebars. Florida code for hurricanes gives you a sturdy, long-lasting, cool, warm house depending on the season. Best, so, something to look at for the future. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Peggy Swerengen speaking on the Fire Department.
Good evening, council and everyone here. Y'all know me by now. Been here several times before talking about the Fire Department protection up in Fishterville and, um, District Three, all the way across. Um, and I've told you about the houses that have burned, the man that died and all that. Uh, and now as Jason was talking about, the, um, the, the, um, last Saturday, the twenty or so fires out there and they weren't, they weren't set. So we know that now. That's good. But whether it had been set or they weren't set, it could have been catastrophic. And as he said, had it been during the week, reiterating what he says, it would have been a whole lot worse than what it is. Um, some of you may not know, but J.C. Doolittle from the Consolidated Fire Department, which is, uh, the Newberry side right over, has been riding in Fairfield County, western Fairfield County, to learn the roads because he knows that we don't have any help over that way. And so he knows that Newberry is having to help us over there. So I'm thankful for J.C. and, and the, and the people from that side. Um, I'm also thankful for our volunteers. I would never put our volunteers down. We cannot do without the volunteers. I drove a fire truck, so I know about being a fireman, a, a volunteer. I wouldn't drive one now. Nobody would want me to drive one now. But, um, I'm, I'm, I'm here and the bad, the sad part is when we have a fire in the western part of the county, nothing to do with our, our pay, our volunteers, we just don't have enough. But we know that Lebanon and, uh, community are coming. We know that they're going to be on their way, whatnot. All I'm asking for y'all, I'm not asking for like the $4 million that the Fire Department, that the hospital's asking. I'm not asking like $350,000 that the EMS is asking for. I'm asking for two bodies to be a fireman, paid fireman up on our end of the county, please, to help, help this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer speaking on SCNG and taxes.
I was going to speak on that, but since I could talk about anything, SCNG is just a bad fish. It stinks. It's over. Nothing we can do about it. But this young man from the Fire Department, congratulations and we're happy to have you. Uh, he's got his hands full and you folks need to unload that. Um, I came home about a week ago from Newberry, having dinner with the Mexican restaurant. And as I'm coming down 34, I see the fire trucks pull out of the Newberry Station. And they're coming towards us. I said to my wife, what the heck are they doing? What I got behind them? Well, we're going. He's booking. And he's going down 34 and he turns on Pearson Road. Whoa. I thought he stopped at the bridge, but he came all the way into our county. Then he came up my road, came down my street. I said to my wife, where were they when we needed them? It was very nice of them. They came to put out the fire that was on Dawkins Road, uh, and it was maybe eight o'clock at night. And we had a bunch of volunteers coming from Newberry. Look, we don't have enough volunteers. We don't have enough money vested in fire. We don't have enough money vested in the police department. We don't. I don't care if they know how to write a budget or don't. We don't have enough people to protect each other. This guy goes out on the street, somebody gives him a hard time, he calls in, nobody's coming to save his life. They want him, but they can't because we don't have enough police. We need the money you're going to give to that dumb hospital. Give it to the police, give it to the firemen, give it EMS. Make it worthwhile. It's ridiculous. Find a way to get the money to the things that we need. Life-saving services is what we all pay taxes for. You pay taxes for what? For what? I'm paying $500 for a truck tax on a vehicle. I didn't pay that when I lived in Hilton Head. For both cars. Let's put the money in a place where it, it really does everyone living in the county a benefit. And SCNG is no longer that big benefit to us. We're not going to get that big check. And you're going to raise taxes on companies? They're a little smarter than us. They hire accountants and lawyers to beat you and play that game. We're the citizens. We need to be protected. Fire Department, we need everybody we can get. He needs volunteers? Let's get him volunteers. I don't know. The school? I don't, I don't know how you do that, but you need to start working on that as a genuine mission. And I know that things take forever in the government. All I'm asking is that you take forever and shorten it down to a heartbeat. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
We're now down to county council time. Any council members have anything? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, a couple of things. I would, I would like if we could, uh, maybe do it automatically at every meeting before we have, when we have the, um, resolutions and ordinances to, uh, to allow our administrator to briefly give explanation on a, on a, uh, by meeting basis, just so that all citizens understand, um, briefly what we're, what we're talking about and voting on. Um, and the other thing, I agree with, uh, appreciate all our firing EMS people and, and I do agree, we need to look at some incentives to, uh, attract more volunteer firemen and, uh, possibly more paid firemen. Um, because this is, is, it is so important and it's, and it is hard to, to, uh, to get these people, but we appreciate them so much. But, um, I think we do need more, do need to do more to protect our citizens and, and, and so looking into, to pay in volunteers some sort of way, looking at some other counties and what they do, and, and paid firemen at each department. And I think also we need to look at, we're talking about diluting fire departments by placing, and, and I don't, I don't know this, but if we're placing too many too close, do we need to look at, and Jason may be on it, uh, Pope, uh, at the whole county and where do we need it more? Do we need more, uh, spread out so we can get quicker? I mean, are these, the one we're talking about now at the lake, are they too close? I don't know that, but I think we need to look at the whole county and see what we need to do as a whole, um, as far as the fire departments. But, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to publicly thank the, uh, emergency service as well, especially the volunteers. Mr. Pope, I think you guys did an awesome job. And as far as EMS, a lot of people didn't understand it, but I did. It was, it was a lot of, uh, I'm sorry, not EMS, but, uh, 911, a lot of people didn't understand that traffic, but I did because it was four or five agencies going on at one time. Um, as far as the, the, the fire volunteers, I do think we may need to look at possibly compensating them per call. Maybe, I think they do get an incentive for a tax break at the end of the year, but I think we will get more volunteers if we possibly compensate them. Maybe $20 a call. Maybe. It's just an idea to get the help that we need because like Mr. Pope said, during the week, it probably be hard to get someone to, to volunteer if that was the, uh, what happened on the west side, did happen. Um, and as far as paid, uh, volunteer, uh, paid firemen on the west side, I'm from that area, so I kind of know it is no man's land. I think it may be a good thing for us to, uh, take a look at, Ms. Taylor. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Ms. Goins?
Good evening. I cannot say thank you enough to our Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, forestry, everyone that came out on that Saturday. I cannot say, I don't know if you've ever had a fire happen. Uh, when I was younger years ago, our home caught on fire and I lived in Columbia and somebody was saying about how quick the Fire Department can get there, but within, it seemed like about five or six minutes, but the damage that was done in such a short length of time is amazing. But we have a team that works for this county and outside of this county that is truly amazing. I mean, really amazing. When I went down to the fire, and I didn't hear my voice on that, I was expecting to hear because I was one of the callers, that person that called in. The dispatch person, I don't know who she was, but she was truly amazing. She just telling me that help was on the way, twenty units were on the way. The way she said it was such authority and professionalism as if all that noise that she was hearing, I was the only person she was speaking to at that time. And that was amazing. When I heard that and I, and I remembered what happened, I was like, wow. But to everybody, you've had to be in that situation to see the smoke, to know what could have happened. And not only if it had happened through the week, God forbid if it had happened at night. What could have happened? But the persons that put their life on the line, when we're talking about volunteers, for somebody, word says, no greater friend has any man, than to, no greater friend has any man to lay down his life for a friend. When volunteers, when people risk their life for the life of others, that's an awesome thing. And yes, for these services, we need to step it up. We need to move it up, do everything we can to support them, every one of them. And I'm going to be, whatever, whatever it is that has to be done, I'm going to do that because I know the most important thing that we have in this county, the lives of everybody. And they gave theirs selfishly, dropped whatever they had to do. And to our team leader, he called me and I guess he could hear my voice because I thought at first that it was intentional. And I was angry. I was very angry that somebody would intentionally do something like that and put people's lives in jeopardy in their property. And so I was on edge. I was furious. And when he called and he said that he was coming over and Deputy Anderson, they were coming over, that said to me. coming over, that said to me that not only are we, uh, separated no longer by district boundaries, we're becoming a unit. We're becoming a unit from compassion and passion one for another. And that's important. When you have leadership that would stop whatever they are doing and just step out, didn't know that our administrator and all had come out, but it is so important for you all to know, Fairfield County has taken a turn and moved to another level that wasn't even expected some years ago. We never thought we could achieve and we're gonna go even higher together. So again, to each and every person that came out, for all that you did, the dispatch and everybody, thank you so much. When I heard the dispatch, again, my heart just, just shaking because I know what fire can do and what they were up against. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Just after Mr. Roof's, um, question about whether we needed a fire station at the place that the church donated. This place, uh, is, is, is serving the only place in Lake Waterie that does not have fire service. All these people out there are paying ISO rating to insurance companies on a ten basis. I'm sure yours is a lot, you know, better than that, but this will help them out on insurance rates and it'll, it'll completely cover Lake Waterie when it wasn't covered before.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. That said, we're now down to executive session. Uh, we have two items for tonight. One is a legal matter, it's an update on litigation against SCANA, SCNG in reference to the abandoned VC Summer New Nuclear Project and a proposed contractual matter is discussion regarding potential purpose of real property identified as TMS number 126-03-01-001-000. It's identified as Fairfield Memorial Hospital property. Uh, do we have a motion to go into executive session for those matters? It's been moved and properly seconded that council go into executive session for the matters as stated. Uh, those in favor? Uh, those opposed? Council's now in executive session, thank you.